Good morning and welcome to the September 26 Minnehaha County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones, please, and there's meeting documents. I've already lost my voice. Mr. Anderson in the corner back there from the Argus has those encumbered, so when he's done, you can steal them from him, or they'll be up here next to Ms. Bender. I'm going to need some help this morning because I'm losing my voice, so if...I think we'll just turn it right over to Olivia.
All right, so, routine business, item number one, consider motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two, approve the commission minutes from 9:12:17.
Is there a motion?
Approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 9:12. Any questions or corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Bills to be paid of $1,457,261.06.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Mr. Chairman, there's really nothing too remarkable about today's bills. We had forty-seven thousand plus going to the Department of Legislative Audit, which is required by the state, but the bill's worth thirty-seven pages long in my copy, which is longer than usual.
Other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item five, it's personnel actions.
Approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the personnel actions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
All right, and then, item number six, application for abatements, there are none. Item number seven, notices and requests. Item A, notice from Split Rock Township of set speed limits as follows: thirty miles per hour on that portion of Maple Street from its joiner with Park Street in the city of Brandon, South Dakota, westerly to its intersection with Six Mile Road and on Forty-first Street. Thirty-five miles per hour for North Powderhouse Road, McCarty Road, South River Avenue, 263rd Street, 264th Street, 265th Street, 267th Street, 482nd Avenue, and 483rd Avenue, and then twenty-five miles per hour on all other township roads.
Thank you, Olivia. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to make? It was just a notice and request, but if there are comments, we would be happy to hear those. Morning, Bonnie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bonnie Duffy, I am a citizen now that lives in Split Rock Township, but at one time I did sit on the board. I've received some calls, believe it or not yet, even though I've been off the board for a while, about the mass amount of speed limit signs that there are, or speed limits areas that they're changing. Many people are concerned about the fact of who's going to monitor it? Are drivers going to observe it any more than they have in the past? And the other concern was, who's going to defer the cost of what the changing of maybe some of the signs may incur? I, you know, I guess it's one of one or two of another. I'm of the nature that no matter how many things you change doesn't mean that people are going to observe them anyway. So, as a citizen, I'm a little concerned with what the cost to the taxpayers are in Split Rock Township, being that the signs need to be changed. I guess the other thing was, in the past, I thought it was only just a courtesy that we just told the commission, or the county commission, of what speed limits that we were changing. Over the course of time that I was there, which was a fair amount of time, we did not change very many. It was mainly on a request basis, actually. So that's just up to you to what you want to do. I mean, I'm sure Split Rock's going to do whatever they want to do anyway. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Bonnie? Because this is just a notice, there's no action that we need to take today, but I think we can inquire back to the Highway Department and ask some questions, see if we can't get those clarified and why that was changed. Commissioner?
Yeah, I guess my experience with speed limits and the science behind how we post them is based on numerous different factors, more than just requests from a board or from a citizen, but based on what's the road designed for, what is the actual speed that traffic is moving at, it has even some role in how we determine what the speed limit should be set at. So, it seems to me that it should be more than just a random or arbitrary decision that we're going to change the speed limits on these roads, and it should be based more on a science of how it is determined. So, I guess I'd be interested to hear how the decision was arrived at to change these speed limits, if that's possible to do.
Legal counsel, and Maggie was happy to share with us, or me, the ordinance. You wouldn't mind just reading that quickly?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, if the commission is interested, then I suspect that you could seek the minutes of the meeting where the township presumably approved these increases. But the statute is Title 32, Chapter 25, 9.2, so thirty-two dash twenty-five dash nine-point-two, and it's the township road's speed limit. And the statute reads, I'll paraphrase, that no person may drive a vehicle in excess of fifty-five miles an hour on a township road. And then there's a one sentence within the four sentences that states, "The township board shall notify the county of any changes, and the speed zones shall be conspicuously posted at the beginning and ending of the zones."
Thank you.
Yes.
So it's pretty clear that the township is the one that initiated this, and we can ask for that information and have it shared with people of interest. Commissioner?
It does seem to me a little bit bold to set the speed limit on twenty-five miles per hour on all other township roads. I mean, that's a lot of roads there. I wonder, is that even feasible to suggest that? Anyway, that was my thought.
Any other thoughts?
South Dakota people drive differently than twenty-five miles an hour, mostly.
I think that's all we can do for this morning. We'll continue the conversation. Item eight?
Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, petition of compromise of lien, there are none. Opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity for anybody who would like to speak about an item that is not on the agenda, we would be happy to hear from those individuals. If they would like to come forward and identify themselves and give us their address, we'd be happy to hear from those. Does anyone have any information they'd like to share? If not, we'll go to item number ten.
Yes, regular business, item number ten, consider motion to adopt the final fiscal year 2018 budget for Minnehaha County.
Morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is presented the fiscal year 2018 annual budget, which you need to approve by the end of September. A little bit of background for the numbers that are on there, the final budget stands at one-hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars, one-hundred-and-thirty-one million, twenty-four-thousand, four-hundred-and-two dollars. That's a big number for us, and I want to talk a little bit about why. That number happens to include the forty-six million dollars for the jail expansion and the additional parking lot that we'll be doing, forty-five million of which is assigned to the jail expansion. In comparison, the fiscal year seventeen final budget was eighty-one million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars. The difference of that is just a little over three million. If you were to, from, if you were to take and take the jail out of that, the difference is about three million dollars or about a, or a four percent increase. Because obviously, the forty-two million, or forty-six million is an unusual number for us, and I doubt we'll ever be seeing something like that again. So, to highlight the budget, the cash applied is four-point-three-seven-five million dollars. That very much is in the range of the numbers that we've been using the past few years for us. You are accessing an additional opt-out of one-point-four million. Two years ago, you passed an opt-out, and you've accessed just this now a couple times. You still have six-hundred thousand dollars of that opt-out available for you. The commission is very frugal about utilizing opt-outs, and you have spread that out and making that work. The CPI adjustment was one percent per the South Dakota property tax limitations, and the property tax growth in Minnehaha County was three-point-zero-two percent. This is the first year for revenues to be received through the centrally assessed utilities for the Dakota Access Pipeline. That pipeline added twenty-four million in value, and it is generating seventy-thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars in revenue, something of note for us. It's a little bit different for us. We've also added positions on that. We created seven new positions, one position to the Equalization Office, one position to the Treasurers Office, one position to Human Services, one Correctional Officer for the Jail, one Deputy Sheriff, two positions for pre-trial program, one part-time position for airport security, which is a new contract for that. In addition to that, you moved three positions within the State's Attorney's Office from grant-funded to county-funded dollars. Minnehaha County's budget continues to be restrained while balancing the increased need of public service and a growing county. I and Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office would stand aside for any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Carol? Kim, do you have any input? You're hiding from me.
Most of these changes that are reflected in this final budget were reviewed at our last budget hearing back on September twentieth, so we really haven't had any significant changes since then.
Before we go on, I forgot to let people know that Commissioner Heiburger is not here this morning because she has a conference, yeah, JDAI conference that she's at, so was unable to attend. So, the other thing I'd like to say to the staff is, we started this process months ago, and the staff has just been awesome to work with. We've made multiple changes, we've had lots of stress to deal with to try to balance a budget with the resources we have had, and the growth of county government specifically in public safety has been enormous, and unfortunately, we don't have the revenues to keep up with that. So, but I really wanted to say thank you to Kim and the staff, and to Carol, and to Craig, and to all the department heads that have had to deal with multiple requests over multiple hours, and we do appreciate all the input you've had. So, with that, does any of the Commissioners have any comments that they would like to make before we adopt the budget? I knew this was going to happen. You saved me for a while. That you would like to make about the budget, or if you would like to make any amendments to the budget? We'll start with comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I might suggest an amendment, but I would say that the budget as we've got it is pretty darn good, and attempting to find the perfect budget is no reason not to pass the good budget. We honestly have battled out over very many things on this, and in good faith by everybody. Our department heads have done a great job. The Auditor's Office has done a great job. Our county staff has worked hard, and it's not an unreasonable budget. I will suggest a couple of things in a second here, but...
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I would agree with all of that. I mean, we clearly have, you know, fought through all of this, and I'd agree, it's not a perfect budget. It certainly, you know, we were able to fund a couple of positions in departments that we have frankly not funded positions in for a very long time, as we've really struggled with public safety issues. I'm hopeful that the RFP that we're working on for legal services will help us address and get our arms around the legal costs and the court costs that we're faced with that have grown remarkably over the last few years, and I'm hopeful if we're able to do that, that we might be able to come back and look at, you know, an opportunity to use some savings to add a position to the State's Attorney's Office, who's also struggling with the increase in crime and the workload. I recognize that, but frankly, we used way more of the opt-out money than I had hoped to use, and our costs are not going to be decreasing when we struggle with our budget again next year. And so, while perfect, not perfect, I would, if one of the comments are over, be willing to make a motion to approve it as it is.
I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments that anyone would like to make? Commissioner Barth?
So, before we approve it, and I plan to vote for this, you know, I would say a couple of things. One is, I do think we should help the State's Attorney, who is still facing a increasing workload, and, you know, the fact that we funded those three positions that were given him by a grant doesn't give him any additional staff going into next year. The other thing I would say is that we're facing a tremendous parking issue as we go forward with this jail project, and I think we should take some additional funds, not necessarily to spend, but to hold in reserve in case we need to make a significant expenditure towards solving what hopefully will be a temporary problem as we lose a lot of parking spots over there by the Human Services Building. And I guess, you know, unless someone else wanted to support me on that, it's moot to suggest these, but, you know, the citizens gave us the money to opt-out. They allowed us to do the opt-out without taking out a petition against us, and they expect us to use that money for their benefit. And for us not to use it for their benefit, I think is to leave them wondering why we had to do it at all.
Other comments? I would suggest, if I might, the parking issue has been addressed. The jail expansion program will absorb some parking space, but we made a long-term decision to expand our parking facilities, and when the jail project is begun, we will have those opportunities to enhance the parking. So, I think we have addressed that. Maybe not as much as everybody would like, but we're not able to build a ramp, that's for sure. So we do have space, if you will, to work with that. Other comments?
Well, I would just say that I do think we've made attempts to address parking. Parking downtown is always going to be a challenge, but without, you know, without any plan, I don't see any point to put some number aside that doesn't really relate to any particular plan or project. And, you know, I think I would stand by my comments with respect to the State's Attorney's Office. I recognize that there is a need, but, and I recognize that the statements about the opt-out, but frankly, I don't think people, the reason people don't oppose us when we do opt-outs is because that we know, that we look at every penny that we spend and agonize over that. And frankly, I was hoping that opt-out was going to last longer than it is, because undoubtedly, just based on history, next year, we're going to probably need more money than we have. And so, I'm not willing to spend any more opt-out right now. I want us to vet out this whole process with the RFP for legal services and see if we can't save money on the court side that we can then reallocate to the State's Attorney's Office, so...
Thank you. Any other comments? Excuse me. You're going to get tired of me saying, "Excuse me" this morning. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, sir? We can do that.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes four to zero. And thank you again to staff for all you've done. I really appreciate it.
Okay, item eleven, we have authorized chair to sign contract between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for housing of Lincoln County prisoners upon completion of the jail expansion project.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. This has long been discussed as we look at a jail expansion for Minnehaha County. We've had a longstanding partnership with Lincoln County about housing their prisoners, and I believe it was around nineteen-eighty-three when Lincoln County closed their jail, and so therefore, they've been coming to Minnehaha County when they've needed jail beds for a long period of time. As we've continued to grow with the number of people who need to be housed from Minnehaha County, we have decreased significantly the number of Lincoln County people who are in jail. Lincoln County has expressed an interest in being able to secure a definitive number of beds that they would pay for on a daily basis whether or not they use them. That number is forty-five beds, and I would tell you that that number will probably often be exceeded by the number of people that they have, because right now, they're housing people in many, many communities in the state of South Dakota and extending great expenses by driving them around to go through and take care of that. So before you is a contract that Lincoln County has already approved. The Sheriff's Office, the Jail, is very comfortable with what they've brought forward. We feel that this is a good process. So basically, in a nutshell, it is forty-five beds they will pay for, even if they're only using forty-four, thirty beds, or no beds, they will continue to pay us that amount of money. If they have more than that, they will pay the per diem rate. This rate will be based upon what we figure on an annual basis, based upon a federal formula. Questions that we can answer? And Warden Gromer is here also, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Carol, and again, thank you for the work that was done on that. That's been a multiple-year conversation, I think. Commissioner Karski?
Just a question, and curious how this works. I know that if we have, if we're housing somebody and they should need medical attention, that the county gets to pay for that medical bill. If we're housing a Lincoln County individual, does Lincoln County pay for those medical bills?
Correct, correct, they're responsible for those.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Commissioner Barth?
Following on Commissioner Karski's question, so if Lincoln County inmate sues because the diet he's receiving includes pork products, which are anathema to his religious preference, do we pay for the legal representation on that?
I believe that would...Gordon Gromer, do you want to answer that question?
I'd like to know why we spend half our time talking about legal issues.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the Jail. Short answer to your question is no, Lincoln County does not pay those expenses. We do. The, Lincoln County will pay for legal expenses concerning issues with Lincoln County inmates. Once they're in our custody, if the issue is with the custody or the care that we provided, then we would be the entity that would be defending the lawsuit.
Good question, though.
Mr. Warden?
Any other questions, or the warden, or is there a motion?
There's a motion to authorize you to sign that agreement, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to assign the agreement with Lincoln County. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item twelve, consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number seventeen-fifty-six to exceed twelve-hundred square feet of total accessory building area on the property legally described as Lot Four, Holbeck Edition, East Half, Northeast Quarter, Section Thirty-four, Township One-O-three North, Range Forty-nine West.
Thank you. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioner David Heinold, County Planning Department. Received an appeal for a conditional use permit seventeen-dash-fifty-six from the last Planning Commission meeting. This was to allow two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet. This property is located to Twenty-five, Five-O-eight Helen Trail. Just skipping forward to the map, the property is outlined, property is outlined in red, and this is Helen Trail, which extends up to Two-Fifty-Fifth Street. This is about a half-mile to Four-seventy-Fifth, or South Dakota Highway's One-seventy, One-Fifteen. And this property is located here. Just going through, the applicant provided a concept plan of how the site would be arranged with the driveway off of Helen Trail, right here in black, leading up to the house, and then immediately south of that, the proposed building, which would actually have a couple of plans on that, too, which basically, there's a forty-by-forty and a thirty-two-by-thirty-two, this weird-shaped building right here in the back. And the rest of the areas, as you can see, lawn and hay and pasture ground surrounding the driveway, just off Helen Trail. This is the site plan, this is what the building, as I mentioned, that's what that looks like. Includes a couple of horse stalls and other storage areas for the applicant, has provided a narrative that explains that it's for personal storage. The, specifically, the appeal letter that was provided to you mentioned concerns over, among things, of drainage of the property, or drainage from additional buildings being permitted in the area. Just going through, this is a map of some of the accessory building sizes, because we go through and can, the criteria for what the buildings are in the area. Generally, you have twelve-hundred to about forty-five-hundred square feet within the area. More recently, the county commission upheld the decision of the Planning Commission approximately last month to allow thirty-five, thirty-five-hundred square feet, and that property was located Kitty Corner to the southwest, and it's on Helen Trail at the terminus, right here. And, as I mentioned, the drainage concerns, this is a contour map that was provided to you, which shows the topography of the area. The building itself would be roughly right here in this area. This is a, this is the top of a hill, so a lot of the drainage, I've got some pictures of that. Drainage would go this way, and as well as some this way, too, because this, the house is right here, so a lot of the drainage would go this way towards, and the pictures will show, and I'll go through, just some of those images, this is looking from Helen Trail towards the applicant's house and the subject property. The building would be located off to the right of the house, roughly right there. This is Helen Trail, looking north, just pictures of the road, looking towards the And just some of the surrounding properties, this is looking to the northwest of the subject property. This is the corner right here. This is looking up that hill, back toward the house and where the building would be sitting, as you can see there. The driveway is just right where that dot is, just up above that dot. This is a culvert and a berm that was installed on the northwest side of the property, which runs towards the road. And then, again, looking down Helen Trail towards, back towards Two-Fifty-Fifth Street, and this just shows that looking north up the hill. And then, this is Two-Fifty-Fifth Street. The drainage runs on the south side of the road, and there's a culvert under Helen Trail. And this is looking back west. Just going through some of the pictures of the buildings in the area, just to get a feel for what's out there. This is about a half-mile away to the east, and, excuse me, that one was just across the street, but this one is half-mile to the east. And then, additional buildings. As I mentioned, so the County Planning Commission unanimously approved this request to allow two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet, and I'll stand by for any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Does anyone have any questions for David at this time? Commissioner Karski?
The two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-four, or whatever, is that just kind of a... The two thousand six hundred and twenty-four, or whatever, is that just kind of a maximum number we typically use? I've seen that number before. Is that... Is that just a kind of a standard that we will go up to on a conditional use basis?
Two thousand six twenty-four is the applicant's request.
Okay.
That's what they requested on their application.
So there's nothing magical about that number as far as... Okay, so that... Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for David? Thank you, David. Because this is an appeal, I would like to hear from the applicant first, and then we'll go back to the opponent of the application, if you will, and we'll share some time between the two. And you'll... Would need to identify yourself, please.
Hello, good morning. I'm Nathan Opitz. Current address is four seven oh seven South Tribby Trails, Sioux Falls.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. Does anyone have any questions, or is... Nathan, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Just one comment. I know maybe we can pull back up the general layout of the property. The... As we knew going into building on the property, there was going to be some drainage concerns. So we did choose to build more towards the center of the property, like was stated on top of that hill. Also, we took into consideration some of the concerns with the outbuildings that were going up in the past with drainage as well. That outbuilding is set back about another twenty feet, so it's not directly on top of that hill, which, again, does mitigate a lot of some of the concerns with drainage. You know, we tried to take every precaution we could to do what we could with our land, to build it, one, the way we wanted to, but also take into consideration the concerns for drainage. I think I feel that we've done everything we can at this point on how the land is laid out with consideration of the house and the outbuilding.
Thank you, Nathan. Anyone have any questions for him? We're good for now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments for individuals who are proponents of the application? Any other comments? If not, we'll go to the opponents that have appealed this application. If, again, Mr. Swanson, you know the route and the habits that we need, so... You need to identify yourself.
Fearsome, if I may.
Mr. Swanson, yeah, thank you.
My address is twenty-seven four fifty-two, four eighty-second Avenue, Canton, South Dakota. And that's a rural law office in the middle of a prairie, which sits next to the big Sioux River, so I get to see a lot of Sioux Falls from time to time. I'm actually here for two reasons. First, to make sure that all of the commission's comments about Lincoln County were appropriate and kind. And I think you passed in that regard. And secondly, I'm here to represent Tony and Angela Lee, who reside and have resided since two thousand and four at forty-seven five sixty-three, two hundred and fifty-fifth street, which is contiguous to and due north of this site. So I'm not the only lawyer in the room, I can see that, but I am one of the oldest, if not the oldest. And so my memory of land use development in Minnehaha County extends back a ways. I can recall, back in the heyday of plating rural developments, that almost anything went anyplace. And that all came to halt, I think, under... And I haven't, you know, you'll have to bear with me, because I didn't have enough time with this file to actually go back and dot all my i's and cross all my t's, because that's the way the law practice goes, but... So I'll recite a few things from memory if I can. I think it was under the nineteen eighty-three Minnehaha County zoning ordinance at the time, which made major changes in how rural developments were handled. There was no more plating of rural developments, and I think if the plat had been approved part of that time, they could still develop. But there would be a subdivision ordinance and so forth, which applied, which did not apply previously. So my clients moved to this property in two thousand and four. It was an existing home. And I do have some photos. Is there some process by which I might share these photos with the commission? Hit that button, stick it there, I guess. All right. We'll let it warm up. In the years since they've lived there, there have been, I understand, three flooding events prior to any construction being handled on this property of Holbeck to the south. Two of those involved water intrusions into the basement, and a total of three involved some form of overland flooding onto the property. The last was in two thousand and fifteen, which was before Mr. Holbeck started any construction at all on this property. And involved only a change in cropping methods when, in preparing to create this development, the property to the south was taken out of row crop and put into alfalfa. Now, what we're looking at here is, to my client, it's a nameless road, because his address is actually on the township road to the, joining to the north. But to this applicant and to this county board, it's Helen Trail, looking north. I'm sorry, looking south. It has a fairly substantial grade. I don't know what the degree of slope is here, but it it moves from a low point adjacent to my client's house and proceeds southerly at a fairly good grade. I don't know, it must be an eight or ten percent grade, I would guess. Now, during the... My clients moved to this property. My client's house, by the way, is immediately to the left of this photo. Their driveway is the first approach in the mid-distance, I guess. And we're not looking at the house, of course. I didn't think that was that important. I wanted you to see what this narrow little trail looks like currently. This is a fairly recent photo. This is on the west side of the nameless road that is now known as Helen Trail. I think this was a flood event in two thousand and fifteen. Last fall. So this is last fall. This is after construction has begun on the property. The rather modest ditches that did exist along the nameless trail, or now known as Helen Trail, were very well silted in and filled, would indicate that contrary to the CUP that was issued by this board, I think in two thousand and eight, there were... There was absolutely no effort to comply with stormwater runoff, silt fences, and the like. Now, when my clients moved to this property in two thousand and four, a Wade Peterson was in the midst of his ten-year battle with this board over the aggregation of some eight building eligibilities that would have been moved and that were proposed for movement across the road to the west in a, an area that is basically floodplain. They were unused building eligibilities, and so because of the dearth of plating for rural developments, Mr. Peterson apparently had the bright idea, ultimately successful, that you could aggregate, as long as you had contiguous properties, and there were some machinations that went through to make these things contiguous, you could transfer building eligibilities and make them into a subdivision, a housing development. And so midway in that process is when my client bought their house. At that time, the property to the south was entirely ag use, ag in row crop use. And by the time two thousand and eight or nine had expired, Mr. Wade Peterson had managed to construct what probably had not been done in this county for a good twenty-five years, and that is the right to have a rural subdivision based on an aggregation of housing eligibilities. Now, when the facilities that my client lived in, the house that he lives in, in two thousand and four was constructed, there was limited or no prospects for a rural subdivision to be located up the hill to the south, simply because this commission was not in the thought process of allowing any further rural development of that nature, of a fairly dense nature. The Wade Peterson case and the CUP that this commission granted, however, in two thousand and eight over the recommended denial of the planning commission, by the way, the county board approved that on a three to two vote, and I understand there was litigation involved. And it's always nice to resolve litigation, but at what price to other landowners? In any event, Mr. Peterson did, I think, I say this correctly, did nothing to really advance this development and eventually sold it off. I'm not sure how many times it changed hands, but now it's in the possession of Mr. Holbret, who is in the process of developing. Somewhere along the line, and in light of our, of your subdivision ordinance, which isn't clear what we do with drainage water subdivision and stormwaters running from subdivisions, it implies that a method of stormwater retention or detention would be nice, but it does not seem to be obligatory. The development plan, and I've only located a copy of the preliminary plan, which was done in two thousand and sixteen. I am told that a final development plan was approved here. But based on what I'm seeing with the preliminary plan from April of sixteen, it makes no provision whatsoever for stormwater retention or detention. No drainage facilities at all. Now we come to the current day, CUP seventeen fifty-six, and as your representative from the planning body pointed out, the prior month, in July, the planning commission approved an even larger accessory building, some thirty-five hundred square feet, I believe, under a separate CUP. I'm guessing now it was seventeen dash forty-eight or something like that. Right across the road to the west, I don't know that that shed is going to affect our drainage, but this one in seventeen fifty-six surely will. I want to be clear with you, if I can. It's not the size of the shed that is so troubling, but it is the size of the shed coupled with the fact that this body and the planning commission has done absolutely nothing to control stormwater retention or detention from this property. I'm not sure what else can be built that will flow into this site, but at some point, I think the downstream owners who built at a time when it was purely agrarian uses to the south only defined through some very novel theory that we could have eight housing eligibilities aggregated up on this hill, and then we have a development plan which has no provision for detention or stormwater runoff. Let me put this picture before you, if I may. This is a view of the driveway serving the subject property. There's now a culvert through there. So we're standing here on Tony and Angela Lee's property, looking due south. The shed and the home being built on the applicant's property is a little bit out of range, further to the left of this photo. I think we are looking dead south in this view. And we see the slope continuing to the south, so we've got a significant area to the south, which drains, will be caught, captured by this driveway, will be funneled to this culvert, and this culvert will then eject the waters pretty much to the south and to the southwest. Just to show you a fairly recent photo of a view standing near the ditch line on my client's property, looking due south up the nameless road, which is now known as Helen Trail. We have water flow which has come from the subject property at a fairly high rate of speed, has gone out into the road and highly eroded. This was, it was an event that left considerable gravel and dirt and silt on my client's property. Finally, one other view. This was taken very recently. I can't tell you the exact date, but I would say within the last month, perhaps. So this is standing about at the north, northwest corner of the subject property. My client's property is a bit further to the left and out of view of the camera. I think what we have going on here is the construction of the home. And we noticed dirt piles and so forth. All of that area will drain to this approximate location and will end up coming onto the road, much in the manner of the picture that I've just previously shown you. I think what is so interesting about this view is the absolute obvious lack of any kind of effort to control stormwater runoff and silt erosion from the property. We got dirt piles up there, and we have absolutely no protective devices whatsoever for flow. All right, so those are the photos that I wanted to share with the county board today. I'm not saying or suggesting to you that this shed is so monstrous and oversized of itself. I understand you go out and make comparisons within a mile or two radius. All I'm asking for is a little bit of discretion in terms of, if you had approved a development plan which proposed to retain or detain stormwaters, that would be perhaps an entirely different thing. But we already have overflows, and this is not going to help alleviate it. Thank you. Any questions, Abine?
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Commissioner Bender?
Mr. Swanson, I just have a couple of questions. One, is the Lee's property, is there driveway out onto this, what you call the nameless road?
Yes.
So, and then who maintains that road?
This is Tony Lee.
Yes, okay. And so I'm curious exactly what you guys are asking for today.
I'm... What I'm asking for is a denial of the CUP until such time as we have some process in place, some impetus, because we're granting these oversized sheds into an area which has a distinct roll-down to the north onto properties that were built at a time when this development was not envisioned, and we've allowed this to proceed without any stormwater retention or detention facilities being planned or provided for. So it's a direct assault of drainage waters. And if it's natural ground, that's a different process, perhaps. But when you develop it into hardscapes as riff lines and so forth, I don't think a CUP varying the twelve... We can't do anything about twelve hundred feet. I mean, that's permitted. But increasing it by more than double, you know, the authorized space or roof line of roof size of twelve hundred square feet compared to what we have here, it's about forty-three percent. So, you know, why are we increasing by CUP roof lines that will drain additional drainage? waters into an area that is already beset in its natural state with drainage waters? We're allowing construction and development with no plan for stormwater detention. That's my concern.
I could ask a follow-up question. So, if I heard you correctly, Mr. Lee admits that he, that his property was flooded twice before there was any development on this property?
Right.
And it's only been flooded once since there started to be some development to the, up the hill.
Well, we can't predict when the stormwater events will happen.
But that's true, there was flooding before there was any development.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
But that doesn't give license to upstream developers to say, well, you've already had water problems, so have some more.
It does raise the question of what's causing the flooding, however, so that it was pre-existing.
I, I'm pretty sure the chances for enhanced flooding will be that much greater when we're dealing with roofs as opposed to alfalfa rural cropping.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, so I'm obviously very curious right now. So, and I also heard you say that it wasn't the size of the building, I'm just trying to understand this, it wasn't really the size of the building that was the issue, didn't you say that at the beginning of your presentation, that it wasn't so much the size of the building, it was the drainage issue?
Well, it's not a fifty, okay, let me try to express my thoughts on that, it's not a fifty thousand square foot building that we're trying to approve here, but you are going about two and a quarter times over what is otherwise authorized in the zone. All I am suggesting is it's rather unwise to do this when we don't have a stormwater retention and detention plan part of the approved development plan, as far as I can determine. I've seen the preliminary plan, I have not seen the final development plan at this point.
Mr. Kerski?
I have questions, and I don't, not specifically for you, sir, but maybe more for David, I don't know if we have any other inputs, so maybe I should, could wait to those, for those questions.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Swanson? Is there anyone else who's an opponent who would like to speak before we can come back to that, if necessary? Thank you. Mr. Kerski, we're back to you.
David, if you don't mind, a couple of questions. First, I, I thought I saw something recently, did the township board take possession or supervision of this road yet, has there been any action on that?
Not that I know of.
Okay, no, okay. Would it be up to the people of the township to vote for the board to take possession? Is that how that works?
The township has to accept the road. The township will have to accept the road.
Okay, and they, as a board, have to accept it, can it be petitioned for the board to do that? What's the?
Landowner can do that, any landowner in the township.
Okay, so, anybody could ask for the township to take possession, then it's up for the board to do that, okay. Question regarding retention, detention ponds, however you want to call them, do we have any design standards that say at any point that you have to build a detention pond if you have so many square footage of roof or hard surface, anything like that?
No.
Okay. What about the requirement of, say, a silt fence in a, in a situation like this?
Yeah, the subdivision ordinance does spell out erosion control measures in chapter ten of the ordinance, and it, before, during, and after development, the, their, the developer is to come up with a plan for installing things like silt fences to control erosion of soil from the site, from the development site, because there's bare dirt there, and other things that may be necessary to help control runoff.
Okay.
And.
Where on this property, can you show me on the map where the, the berm and the culvert are, that we're talking about where the, basically the water runs down?
So, that blue area is where the berm is.
And the culvert, then, there's a swale or a ditch that carries the water at that point. So, there's nothing as far as the requirement at this point for a silt fence to exist there where maybe we could stop some of the silting and the water running down. And I don't know who makes that call, is it up to the developer to do that, or is it up to our requirement, do we have the expertise to say you have to put a silt fence here?
So, sorry, so, to answer your question, the, the silt fence, there was erosion control measures installed, but they were taken away. The silt fence has been installed by that berm, by the culvert, on the northwest side of the subject property, and also there was one installed on the other side of Helen Trail, where the plan, for the erosion control plan that the developer submitted, outlined where those would be, and they're on, right on the north side of the.
So, they already exist?
Property, yes, they're there now.
They are there now.
We were just out there yesterday.
Okay.
And.
So, okay, I couldn't see from the photos that there was a silt fence.
Yeah, the photos in, in your packet, they're not in there, but the photos that we took yesterday afternoon, they're there.
An additional requirement for a silt fence would be redundant on this, in this case, because one already exists, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions for David?
I guess, David, just since you were out there yesterday, I'm just curious, I mean, do you feel like that the drainage has been adequately addressed with those measures? And the erosion controls are adequate?
Well, I mean, with, it's, it's difficult to tell, because I, I don't believe that we received enough rain for, for it to understand if that really is the case, because they were just installed within, like, probably the past week, is when we contacted the developer to put those out there, because development is still occurring, and until grass can take root and be there to help slow down water, then those can, those have to be there.
Any other questions for David? Any other comments, Mr. Swanson or the applicant? Nathan, would you, either one of you like to make any comments?
Thank you. Could you move to page four of that document, I think that's up there, I think it was page four? Yep. Correct. So, some of the comments made about, well, one, they're somewhat confusing on, I, I agree with Ms. Bender, that the beginning, it wasn't about the size of the outbuilding, and then towards the end, it was about the size of the outbuilding, so we'll set that aside a second. But at the end of the statement, some comments were made about this outbuilding surely will aid in the water runoff to Mr. Lee's property. As I stated before, my house is at the top of the hill, we have chosen from the concerns from Mr. Lee to build at least twenty feet to the east, making that outbuilding on the downslope of that hill. So, from a physics perspective, I'm just, without having an actual percentage to know, the majority, if not all, of the water that's going to hit this roof will either go to the northeast or the southeast. So, I needed to make that clear, because I think that's one of the major points of topics for this discussion today, as far as from my outbuildings perspective.
Thank you, you'll need to identify yourself also, please.
Megan Opitz, I'm also at four seven zero seven South Tribby Trail. I actually even had a question or clarification, you guys allow the twelve hundred square foot outbuildings. Now, if we had two separate buildings that were that same square footage, would that be allowed, or is it just one building?
I believe not, but David, would you address that, please?
No, it's the total of the buildings combined, so even if you had two separate buildings that were detached from each other, it's the total combined.
Does that answer your question, Megan?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that. There's another question I had, but I'm drawing a blank here, sorry, I've not got it speaking publicly, but like my husband said, I think we've done what we can, this image doesn't reflect the fact that the outbuilding is actually farther back than our house, because of how we had to do our driveway, or, yeah, our driveway. We did move it back quite a bit than what is pictured, they do stress that this all used to be alfalfa and everything beside them, you know, like we said, we moved, instead of having our pasture to the back of our house, like we would have done if we had a, you know, not that we didn't have a choice, but we're trying to be reasonable people here. We empathize with his flooding, and we would never want to contribute to that, and we have, you know, tried to be reasonable, we're not putting our outbuilding where we want to put it, we're putting it where it makes sense, and, you know, we want to get along and live together, I mean, he's going to be our neighbor, we don't want to upset anybody, but this is what we have purchased the land to do, you know, we want to have what we want, and we want to be able to have some storage to go along with it, to make sense with being able to have five acres, again, you know, a lot of our neighbors there to the north have one acre land, you know, they talk about a subdivision, I don't look at it as a subdivision, each of these houses that are building, and there's not eight, there's six, and the only ones that are next to him are actually only folk, gonna be four, there's not even, the fourth one's not even being built, I don't know what's going on there, but I don't, I don't see it as a subdivision, you know, I don't, I didn't want to move into a subdivision, I wanted to move out into the country, you know, and I want to give that country feel to it, I don't want to build, 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 that's not our intention here. But, you know, we want to make a nice land, be able to store our stuff away, not have it just laying everywhere, we're, we like to, you know, feel like we're living in the country, but be able to store our stuff, it's not like we want to cause harm to anybody, you know, that berm is up there, we haven't had any requests of any way we can help the flooding, you know, we'd be willing to, you know, do reasonable things, you know, we have a budget, and we can't go spend a million dollars, but we'd be willing to do reasonable things, to do what we can to prevent his house from flooding, that's for sure.
Thank you, Megan. Commissioner Kerski?
Interestingly enough, not a question, but a comment for you, had breakfast this morning with the city engineer, I hope he doesn't mind me referencing this, but we talked, and I've had six years now of looking at flooding issues in, in the city and the county, and talked about engineering and design standards, you know, at what point is something going to flood? And Sioux Falls looks at construction of, you have to have enough drainage for three inches of rain in a twenty-four hour period. If you get fifty-four inches of rain like Houston did, or, you know, seven inch rain in an hour like we have seen around the Sioux Falls area, you're gonna have flooding. I, at what point is too high of a standard unreasonable to make the cost prohibitive? And, you know, I, I look at this, and I, I see where people are trying to be good neighbors and do reasonable things, I, I think we're doing what we have to do here, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the CUP as it was presented, as it was approved.
Is there a second?
A second, I actually have a question for Nathan, if I might.
Oh, absolutely.
You said that the drainage currently is going to the northeast and the southeast, using the cursor there, can you sort of sketch that, you know, from?
Can we get to the slide where it actually shows the circular drainage? Because I think if you see kind of, where our house is in the middle, but the outbuilding is back farther, to me, we, we were hoping, or what we were planning for, is that the drainage would go back or over, you know?
Do you mind if I walk over?
Because the back of the property, that back corner, actually slopes back up, so if any drainage went that way, it didn't, you know?
House is roughly located here, I think in the drawing, we have the outbuilding parallel with the house, meaning some of that drain water from the roof depicted from the slope diagrams would drain this way, this way, and this way. Setting that building back at least twenty feet, I couldn't remember the exact measurement, where, where the front of that building is now going to be here, meaning that roof line, that, that drain water is going to go this way and this way. I mean, it was every step we could take to try to make ourselves on the back of this hill, so if rainwater would hit that roof, it would try to take these natural paths away from the, away from Mr. Lee's property.
Other questions for Nathan or from Megan? Any comments, Mr. Swanson? Otherwise, we have a motion.
I think the motion's already been made and seconded, so I think I'm off.
Okay. We have a motion on a second to approve the permit. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item thirteen.
Item thirteen, consider motion to authorize the Director of Human Services to submit a grant application for shelter plus care housing vouchers for Safe Home.
Morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carrie Benz, Director for Human Services. I have a really short request, an easy one, I believe. We were able to come upon some funds with the state consortium that is formed by the entire state, every county, every individual is welcome to attend those meetings, to be a part of the consortium, and as a state, we make application for federal fund dollars every year, where those funds can come into the state and fund not only programs, but different housing opportunities. And so, it just so happens this year, I was able to coordinate with the state, with South Dakota Housing, and we were able to convince Sioux Falls Housing to be our main applicant, and we can apply for additional shelter plus care vouchers. Those vouchers are similar to Choice Housing vouchers, in that it provides us the assistance that we need to house individuals, but the money comes actually from federal dollars. And so, the federal dollars get disseminated to the state through our application, and then the state then gives us those funds to utilize for those type of vouchers. With Shelter Plus Care, the nice part is, it allows us to house our shelter, our Safe Home individuals, and house them at thirty percent of their income or zero balance due them if they have no income. But the federal dollars then pay the rent for us instead of the county having to pay that rent. And so, this application allows us to apply for, I believe it's a hundred and five thousand, and I believe it's seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. But Sioux Falls Housing will make that initial application with us being the co-applicant to receive those funds to provide us the shelter plus care vouchers to utilize at Safe Home. We currently have five of those vouchers at Safe Home, and so, those federal dollars help us pay and offset the cost. So, if we're awarded those funds, we could actually receive assistance anywhere between, I'm not sure, Sioux Falls Housing hasn't identified what their management fee is out of that amount, and so, pending the amount that they take out of that hundred and five thousand, whatever is left would go toward actually housing vouchers, so we could have probably somewhere between ten and twelve additional vouchers out of the thirty-three units that we have, so we would add that to the current five we have. So, the nice part of that is, is it means that the county does not have to supplement that cost.
Questions for Carrie?
I'd make a motion to allow the Human Services Department to apply for this grant.
Second.
Just have a question.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around all this, Carrie, so.
Sure.
This is strictly going to be used in the Safe Home itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And if it's not used because it's not needed, or is it pretty certain that it's going to be used?
It's very certain it's going to be used.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that answers the question, thank you.
And the match portion of the grant is already services that we provide with meals and all the care that we give as, as a county to these individuals, so there isn't really a cash match, it's something that we've already been doing for the individuals who are there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, with the Shelter Plus Care vouchers, with this type of housing assistance, we need to match the assistance that we're given, so instead of paying cash, we choose and select to do that through services rendered, so all of our case management, the food we provide, et cetera, provide that match.
Great. We have a motion on a second to approve the request, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Item fourteen is Commissioner Leonson reports. Commissioner Barth?
Well, last night, we were here just till nine o'clock on planning and zoning, and probably our biggest issue was a gravel pit over in the. probably our biggest issue was a gravel pit over in the Skunk Creek area that we approved last night for Merle and Roy's. There was some discussion, but really, it did not seem antagonistic or anything. I would say that another item of discussion last night, we met jointly with the Dell Rapids Planning Commission here also, and we approved a, an outbuilding of, you know, I can't remember exactly, like 1,300 square feet. And currently, anything over 1,200 square feet requires us to take action. We had another thing on the, on the list, just in the, in the Pure County, that was for a 10,000 square foot outbuilding, and we took that off the consent agenda, and turns out that they were tearing down two or three smaller outbuildings and making one bigger building. So we approved that. But the Dell Rapids folks think that we should revise our 1,200 square foot thing to a higher number, and the staff has been working on that somewhat. At the same time, when we met five weeks ago, or whenever, with the Sioux Falls planning and zoning, they didn't think that it needed to get to be bigger. And so, you know, here you have five and 15-acre lots within a mile of Dell Rapids, and then you have one acre lots near Sioux Falls, and so there is a difference in how property is assessed. Perhaps the state's attorney who attended till the bitter end might have a comment on that as well. I do have another item as well.
You get credit for overtime for that, correct?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
I have a question or a comment, maybe, for Commissioner Barth, I'm a defer to your expertise, because you've been doing this a long time, but, you know, I look at the, you know, the one we just had, and, you know, just some of the others. We just look at the size of the building, but we don't look at the, maybe the hard surface, the paved, the concrete, blacktop asphalt. Do we look at, you know, how many, how big the plat is that this is going on? Is there any, you know, relationship between, you know, not only the building, but the concrete and the pavement and whatever else might be going there in relation to the size of the plat? How, can you, is that something that should be talked about if you're going to open that can of worms anyway?
I, I don't think we should. I think that, you know, the county is a huge entity, and, you know, if you want to live with all these restrictions, you should live in a municipality. In fact, if nobody lived in the rural area, planning and zoning would be so much easier. I would also just comment on this particular case, that they were right, that there was a deal made that moved a bunch of eligibility's away from the floodplain. We will not give you a building permit if you want to build in the floodplain. And so they purchased some land and transferred these eligibility's using the contiguous scheme, and then reverted that land back to the original owner. And so it was a bit of a shenanigan. At the same time, there are thousands of eligibility's along the Big Sioux River that cannot be built currently. And I guess also, I would say that despite our best efforts, the laws of nature, including gravity, cannot be blunted by whatever our county decides. Stuff goes downhill sometimes.
Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
I would say that we went last week to the state convention out there in Rapid City, and the absent one of us, Commissioner Heiburger, was elected second vice president of the State Association. Next year, she will be first vice president, and the year after that, she will be president of the State Association. Yeah, it was an interesting convention. I felt like I had trouble getting out of the building, because I kept getting lost and wound up in the bleachers and like, ah, anyway. It, I hardly got to see the sky during the whole time I was there, and I caught a cold while I was there, but, you know, an organization that I'm with had a booth working on raising the taxes on alcohol, and we made a number of inroads with commissioners from across the state. That's the South Dakota Alcohol Policy Alliance, and I think our business meeting was pretty darn short. We, we really did not review any of our potential legislative priorities. I guess the, the Board of Directors is going to take the reins on that and do everything on that. Lincoln County was barely represented, and certainly didn't demonstrate any leadership.
Other comments?
If I could, a couple, I was at the state meeting also with Commissioner Heiburger and Barth, and Commissioner Barth was my chauffeur, so if he was lost, I was too. You know, we did, the county had, you know, decided on some legislative issues that we wanted to be addressed, and the State Association was very good, and I'm sure I'm going to get this wrong, and if Commissioner Heiburger's watching or watches this recorded, I apologize, but those things that we wanted to be part of the platform became part of the policy of the State Association, so that, more of a procedural move, so that we could get it addressed. They're very gracious in working with us to make that happen, so those things are being talked about, I guess, so just FYI. The second thing, we had a UDC meeting last Thursday. Really no big action. We did vote on a couple of things, and that was letters of support for the Chair of the UDC, which is Colonel Tweet, to sign letters for communities like Hartford, T, and I know they're not part of Minnella County, but this is the greater urban area, basically with some main, or construction on their main roads, and that construction to include stuff like a bike path and pedestrian access and that type of thing. So that was primarily the biggest thing that affects more of our urban communities.
Other liaison reports? As you bring up the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, I think it would be interesting for those staff members who went to that conference, if they would either do an oral report sometime or a written report for us to get that information back, since frankly, we're supporting that financially, and I think it would be good to learn more about some of the places that you all couldn't attend, because there's lots of seminars going on at the same time. So if you have a liaison responsibility to somebody that went to the convention, if you will, I think it would be good to have either a written or oral response to their experience. Go ahead.
An excellent point, Mr. Chairman, and Bob Litz and Julie Risti were also there, and so perhaps getting their thoughts would be beneficial as well. They have a separate organization, separate legislative issues, and see what happened with, with their proposals.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would just say that Melinda Starley and our staff made new maps for us that fit better in our drawers. I know that I was referring to it during our meeting today. I was referring to it during our meeting last night, and I would suggest using them.
Thank you. Any old business? Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have a meeting at 11:00 next door, correct?